I know. Um, okay, it's six thirty. We will start the meeting of Monday, May twenty-third with a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all. Okey dokey. Now, we have, uh, manifests to approve.
And we have all four in the binder there?
And we have one, two, three, four in the binder.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifests of May second and May sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the payroll manifest of May third and May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Okay, and we've got the minutes of, uh, four twenty-five. Is everybody good with those?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And I'll take a motion on those as well.
Motion to approve the minutes of four twenty-five, twenty-two, as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, boards and committees. Nothing on budget, right? They're not meeting yet?
They're out of season.
Um, planning, I didn't get anything from Ben. I think we had gotten something prior to the last meeting?
They may not have met since then.
Yeah, probably not. The last planning board update we got from him was, um, on five eleven. Case number twenty-two, oh oh two, sub-smoke division, subdivision was continued. Case number twenty-two, uh, zero zero four S I T, map lot sixteen, proposed site for Campbell. Camper rental passed. Um, master framing taken, taking up space at two forty stage road, old furniture lumber. Themed no change in property use, updated bylaws signed. So that's what we got from him for the planning board. Uh, C I P.
Out of season.
Yep, out of season. Marston screaming along.
I see co-op was there today.
Yep, electrical going in today, fencing up. Um, it's looking really, really good out there. Uh, the fence looks great because there's, uh, sponsor signs up on the fence as well. So, very cool things happening out there. Um, we have no town administrators report.
Three hundred, do you want it?
Oh yeah, three hundred, sorry.
Did you guys go?
I didn't go to the play, no.
No.
Anybody else go?
I wanted to go.
Steve, you did a wonderful job as the heckler. I do, I do like you a lot more quiet in the audience, but that's great, but it was a wonderful, I went Saturday night with my mom. Um, the performance was great, the people in town that came out to do it was great. I mean, the auditorium was pretty packed with, most of the seats were filled to Saturday night. It was a really nice turnout.
Oh, cool.
It was funny because there was a lot of points that were brought up that did really sound like you were sitting at a town meeting. You know, some of the things were derogatory as a selectmen, but that's okay. That's just how it works.
Well, that's reality.
That is reality, exactly, so. But again, Steve, you guys did a wonderful job. Your whole cast did a great job. Um, I hope the turnout Sunday was as good as Saturday night.
It was, and it was nice because I was worried, it was such a beautiful day.
Right.
Uh, but again, it was neat to get, hard to believe, a ninth grader and tenth grader.
Yeah, kids great. Yep.
That's amazing.
They did a really wonderful job. I'm very happy that I went to see it. It was, it was, um, it was cool, or for what it was, it was great, so.
Steve, do you know if anybody recorded it?
I believe, what? Mary Bates did her own, uh, iPhone or something.
Oh, fantastic.
Oh, good.
Good, good, good.
I gave it fantastic.
Oh, great, thank you.
Perfect. Um, I, we haven't met since the charter day event. And, um, I thought that was a great event as well. They did a really, really good job on, uh, the burying of the time capsule here, and that Tyler did an excellent job shoveling.
He, he really knew how to dig it.
Yeah.
He was digging it. Um, and then up at the, up at the square, I was actually really impressed. I thought the whole thing went great. Um, Peter Abbott, the British General Counsel from Boston, uh, came, you know, uh, gave a great speech. Um, you know, so he was impressed as well. So, um, you know, a lot of, uh, a lot of people contributed to the success and contributing a lot to the success of the year overall. But two people I just wanted to, to flag tonight were Joe Welch and, um, Kelly Delaire. Uh, Joe and his wife did a lot of the behind the scenes work getting everything ready for that day, and as did Kelly. Putting together packages and everything, so, and reaching out to the speakers. Uh, there was also one, I read letters of congratulation from Maggie Hassan and Christopher Pappas. There was one from Gene Chahin that kind of got lost in the shuffle because it came in late, but I believe Kelly was posting that on the website with the others. So.
Nice.
Then I, I had a, uh, just, uh, I'm gonna get the board of selectmen to consider.
How was it?
I had a call today asking if the town may be able to help purchase, I don't know what you call them, bounties or, you know, the banners.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
The oldest, uh, for the town, some of the town buildings. I said I'd bring it up.
Yeah, we can take a look what's in the budget, you know, yeah.
I thought the other thing particularly for the charter day was the, the Nevers Band, they were amazing. Uh, I never heard of it. They've been around for a hundred and fifty years, but they were really good.
Yeah, yeah. The, uh, the other thing that I was impressed by, some of the, um, the guys who were in the regiments, right? And there was one.
Your Majesty's tenth regiment of foot.
Correct. There was one kid who was eighteen years old. And, you know, they're, they're pretty committed to it. They do a number of events. And I asked him how he got into it, and he went to, um, you know, one of the, uh, battles of Lexington and Concord and Sarat when he was a kid. And he became, he just basically fell in love with it and kept asking and ac- asking and asking until he found a regiment that took him in. So, it was, that, that was cool. Um, okay, assessing. We have a lot for assessing tonight.
All right, I'll, I'll just start at the top.
First off, is everybody ready to do this? I think a lot of this is time sensitive, but.
This, uh, what, uh, you know, no, he, he.
Yeah, he's, he's prepared to.
Okay.
Yeah, address that.
Is that, where, where is that?
It's, it's just those two that I pointed out to you. Oh, I don't know what that one is.
Um, that's, this was from the packet from.
Let me see.
The twenty-fifth.
Uh.
Are those on tonight's list?
They are.
They are. I read them both today. The two right here, these two names?
Yeah, but, um, it's not, no, they're not the same lot, lot numbers.
Hold on, here.
Well, I mean, I read them, like, once she's, once she's sent, so.
Yeah, no, these are different.
No, but no, this is right because. John, John's right there.
This was in his.
Sorry, never mind. I, this is tonight's.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, that's old stuff from two meetings.
I wonder if he ever acted on those.
I don't know, I don't remember.
All right.
Um, all right. All right, I'll make a motion, uh, that we deny the land use change tax abatement for map sixty lot one per Avatar recommendation.
Go to second.
Second.
All in favor?
Right. I'll make a motion that, uh, the select board deny the elderly exemption for map seventy-two lot twenty-two per Avatar recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
And I'll make a motion to approve the land use change tax for map sixteen lots sixteen dash one and sixteen dash two.
Uh, s- um, map six. Did you say map six?
I did.
Okay.
Map six.
I thought you said map sixteen.
No, map six lots sixteen dash one, sixteen dash two. Map twelve lots fourteen dash one, fourteen dash two. Map twenty-four lots one forty-one dash two A and one forty-one dash two B.
Second.
All in favor?
Right. And I'll make a motion to approve the solar exemptions for map four lot eighteen dash four, map five lot nine dash thirty-eight, map twenty-four lot twenty, map sixty-seven lot fifteen, map sixty-eight lot seventy-seven, map seventy lot seventy-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
I'll make a motion to approve the veterans exemptions for map five lot nine dash forty-six, lot seventeen dash one, lot seventeen dash one exemption number two, map forty-two lot nineteen dash thirty-five, and map seventy lot thirteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Right. And finally, uh, make a motion to approve the intent to cut timber for map nineteen lot nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Good job, Tony. Okay, um, E nine one one. Um, so Chris sent me a summary of this. Um, there is a smaller number of roads that will be, um, they'll be impacted by changing names and numbers. Uh, we got that list from him last, a couple of weeks ago. It's much smaller than the original number that we talked about. Um, so next week, anybody who's affected by that will receive a notice, um, letting them know that there is a, going to be a hearing on June sixth with, which is our next meeting. And at that time, there'll be a, um, you know, kind of a discussion about what's trying to be accomplished here, what the purpose is, what the process for the change is, and then more details on the road segments, um, that will have new names. So that will be important. If you receive a letter indicating, um, informing you about this, it'll be important to attend our meeting on the sixth. Um, and because that's going to be the opportunity to, to provide public comment. Um, probably what will happen after that is, you know, the staff will come up with proposed names. Um, but, you know, there'll be an opportunity for residents to provide input between the sixth and the, uh, twenty-seventh, so they can come up with specific requests. Um, and then on seven eleven, board will hold the final vote on which roads are changing and what names will be mailed, uh, what the new names will be. So a lot of, all of this will be posted on the town website, but the, the important takeaway there is that if you receive a letter, then you should try to come to the meeting or the public hearing on the sixth. Any questions, comments, discussions around that?
No, that's pretty straightforward.
Pretty, good.
Is that the numbers or the names or both?
The numbers or the, uh, well, it's definitely the names. It will probably impact the numbers as well, I would imagine, but I'm not sure.
I thought they had said before the numbers were involved as well.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's correct because it says exact numbers and names will not be part of the notice. Okay?
Both?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, okay, we had intended, Chris had intended to talk about purchasing policies tonight, but since he's not here, we won't get to that. Um, we had discussions about the opening of the beach for the past weekend. Um, but we had put it as an agenda item, but that's kind of passed now. Is there anything anybody wants to comment on or cover relative to that?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Fine.
It's open for the season now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, it should be open every day officially after this weekend.
Right, right.
Closed right now.
Right, right.
They should officially open every single day come Saturday for the week.
Right, because it was opening this coming weekend anyway.
Okay.
Um, well, so we have the conservation commission hearing at seven. Is there anything anybody else wants to bring up? Before we do that, we can spend some time signing paperwork.
I don't have anything. I can start with the manifest.
Why don't you start with everything and just send them down as you sign?
Okay.
And get a one-way line going.
Production line.
From the last meeting?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we, that will go into the next, actually. Conservation of, uh, uh, custody waivers. Did you already handle all of those?
Leave that for the next one.
Okay.
We can check that with them.
Do you know what's the meeting schedule?
Um.
Get a bit?
Yeah.
Um, Sean, the claim to the South Society Center?
Oh, we need to put, put the action item for Chris and I to schedule that.
You were to sign that one.
Uh, then you do. Purchasing, uh, policy.
Yeah, put that on the next one.
You sign these already too?
Yeah, we do here.
Same with that one. This one was out all by itself.
Yeah, we take minutes for that.
Yep. Uh, we'll.
It's the twenty-third, right?
Yep.
Here's just that one spot.
Right as cramp.
Yeah.
So we give three biology regents either.
Hopefully these ones are easier.
We have to count these tests where they is. We're trying to crank out a whole mess up. Because when we change over to the new exam, they want to do both, the new and the old. Does it kids, the elders.
Oh, shoot.
Take a, because they had come over or something. Or they offer the exams course that they took. It's the new one. And that's part of the hard part, that we have the state. Standards, but you have to ask questions, and rather to that set of standards, but you can't ask bad science. Twenty years ago. Today it's something a hundred. More reaching.
Seven minutes to go.
Hold on, this is a good thing, huh? It's on the back.
No sticker on that one.
Aha, just trying to trick us. See if we're paying attention.
Almost there.
Hold your hand on it.
What's that one? Oh, yeah, last one.
They wanted to watch it. Terrible, they're decent. The next thing, she was addicted to it, just like the kids.
Is there something else going on tonight?
That I'm aware of.
Just a hearing from the, the, they got the.
And this one, I guess we don't have, I didn't see any place for a signature there.
This is actually the, the folder full of those.
Okay.
Was it supposed to be a hearing the last meeting?
Huh?
Was it supposed to be a hearing the last meeting?
Yeah, we didn't have corn, we couldn't have it.
Yeah, maybe that's why they hit.
So this is actually the continuation of it. What, the conservation commission? Yeah. I know.
So this is all the same case here?
Yeah, which was, I just, I didn't see anything that needed to be signed there.
Oh, wait a second. No, this is for seventy-two twenty-two, and there is a signature sheet on the second page.
Ah, okay, so she just.
So.
Okey dokey.
That was it.
Last one. Last one.
She's laughing. It's only ten days. I'm just trying it on for size.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wife like it so far?
No. Or the boys. Boy coworkers.
Alrighty.
Seven o'clock.
Thank you. The glamour of being a select person. Getting to sign all that paperwork. Okay, that brings us up to, uh, seven o'clock. And the conservation commission hearing, which is the continuation, I guess, from the last meeting, so come on up.
There's room over here, too.
Yep, there's room over here.
My name is Sam Damar, I chair the conservation commission. And I see that we have four conservation commission members here, which constitutes a four, so we can hold a public hearing. This public hearing is per RSA thirty-six dash A colon five Roman numeral two. The Nottingham Conservation Commission shall hold a public hearing pursuant to RSA six seventy-five colon seven. This hearing will be held during a pause in the Board of Selectmen meeting, thank you. On Monday, May twenty-third at seven PM in Conference Room One at the Nottingham Community Center, one thirty-nine Stage Road, Nottingham. This is to consider expenditures from the conservation fund to help retire the debt from conservation easements and assist in the debt service on land located at map twenty-nine lot eight, also known as Mulligan Forest. This is a continuation of the public hearing held by the conservation commission on May ninth, two thousand twenty-one.
Twenty-two thirty-two.
Uh, twenty-two. I can't even read. Okay, um, at the last, uh, public hearing, we heard from, or we explained that we would, we would, uh, like to take a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, which is approximately half the debt of the, on the Mulligan Forest, um, to, you know, help pay off that section, that much of the profit of the bond. And it was approved by the conservation commission at a previous meeting plus the public hearing. At this time, uh, the way I'm gonna set this up, uh, I guess we ought to, like, last, I guess you already know the, all the details at this point. The way I'm gonna handle this is I will ask the, um, Board of Selectmen if they have any questions about the, pulling the expenditure out of the conservation fund. And then I will, uh, when they are done, uh, we're done answering all their questions, then I will turn it over to the public for public comment. So, any questions from the Board of Selectmen?
I don't have any.
No? None? Nope, none.
A quiet bunch.
Could you hear discussing?
Yeah, okay, sure.
I just wanna, um, say that, um, Chairperson Donna Denise came to the first, uh, public hearing that we held that's continued through the evening. So she's probably had an opportunity to share what she saw and heard with her other select board members. Thank you.
So at this point, I will turn it, I'll open the public hearing to, uh, members of the public. If anybody has any questions, comments? One more time, or any comments from the... Last chance? Okay, in that case, I think I can close our section of the public hearing and leave it up to the board whether they will approve the expenditure.
So the, the, just kind of like process-wise, and correct me if I'm wrong, process-wise, is that the conservation commission ma- makes their recommendations, votes based on their votes. The select board makes the final, uh, vote about the actual expenditures of the funds. That's the way that the conservation commission, uh, process was set up. So this is now the point where we will discuss and take vote on, um, whether or not to actually take out the funds. Any members of the board have any comments? Uh, the only thing I'll say is that I, you know, I, I thank and compliment the commission for, you know, listening to what people had to say at the deliberative session and for actually taking this step. So I say thank you.
Agreed.
Motion?
All right, I'll make a motion that the select board approve the use of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from the conservation fund and up to a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance to retire the debt on the Mulligan Forest easement.
Second.
All in favor?
Approved.
And then we have, we have a second motion related to retirement of debt.
I'll make a motion that the select board approve the use of up to a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars from the undesignated fund balance to retire the debt on the fire station.
Second.
All in favor? So that's, that's two good opportunities to, uh, retire and reduce debt.
Do you agree that?
Um...
Took the one, you said the one fifteen, we took the one sixty.
Did you say the one forty-two? I think you did, right?
I did.
You did.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yep. Excellent, okay.
I, I just wanted to make one, one comment. Um, at the other public hearing, we did give a lot more detail and, and stuff on this, but just, um, in reality, the, the article that talked about, um, article number twenty-three, spending money out of the conservation fund to pay off the debt, was deemed by the town council to be illegal and unenforceable. So technically, the conservation commission did not have to spend money out of this because of the way that that, that was an illegal, um, warrant article. But because of the way that the residents in the town voted for that, um, that's why the conservation commission decided to go ahead and spend money out of that. And we just hope that a big project doesn't come along and, and, um, we're short on funds to go forth with another project. But we, we deemed that that was, um, a good thing to do.
It was a gesture on the conservation commission's part to realize that, um, this would be a good public, um, PR opportunity for everybody and conserve properties as well. Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
It was easy peasy.
Thanks, Sam, I think we have to technically adjourn.
I thought we... Did, did you close it?
Uh, yeah, I didn't, we didn't adjourn, we closed the public hearing.
Okay, yeah, then we're good.
Yeah.
We're done.
All right. Yep, thank you.
I'm sorry, can I ask, my first time here, um, I'm not sure if this is the right form to bring up the subject. I live on Stevens Hill Grove, which basically is where Mulligan Forest is located. There's been discussion of possibility of, uh, a couple of subdivisions going in there on the forty-eighth parcel and the sixty-eighth parcel, then, uh, but Mulligan Forest. Um, some of us are really concerned as to how this is gonna affect Mulligan, how it's gonna affect the road, how it's gonna affect, um, the wildlife, Quincy Pond, et cetera. So I'm not sure if this is a planning board issue, if this is someplace where we can get some kind of direction as to, is there anything we can do? I know we can't stop it unless we come up with a million dollars and pay for this, but, and buy the property. But is there anything that we can do as citizens and residents of this particular road? It's beautiful, how can we preserve it and protect it? Thank you.
Well...
My name is Denise Shanahan.
Thanks, Trina.
Thank you.
Denise, certainly one thing is, is when, when these particular potential developments come up at the planning board, is to make sure that you are at those public sessions. Um, and express that as well. You could also check to see with some of the, the land conservation groups around here, such as the Southeast Land Trust or Bear Hall. Done it?
Bear Hall, North East Forest, the Forest Society, all of them, uh, several months ago, actually, I, before this started, I was in touch with all of them. And then this sale happened, so this is where the canyon flooded, where me was being hit right now.
Mm-hmm, yep, totally understandable.
What, how many, how many homes did you say, forty?
Um, no, there's forty acres that, um, was owned by Mr. Williams, he sold it to Joe Falcione. The next property is sixty acres, which is owned by Mr. DiBerto. Right now, forty acres are being surveyed for eight to nine houses. There's wetlands, there's rental pools, all kinds of things involved right there. And then Mr. DiBerto has twenty-four acres of just frontage, which is, so it doesn't go over to the Bean River, just fronted being surveyed. I get very nosy and I ask the surveyors what they're doing.
It just, you know, Mr. Falcione, uh, is the constructor of Francesco Way. He is the developer of Rocky Hill, which is off ledge farm. He is a, not to make you nervous, but he is a very big and, um, well-known builder of, uh, of developments.
And he's also, also the other development that was off of...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Oak Ridge.
Oak Ridge, yeah.
Yeah.
But also Highlands and Brook Cross.
So again, not to...
He's not adverse to entertaining an offer, because he's a land broker, he keeps telling people.
Right.
So...
And so that would mean that someone would have to reimburse him for all the land he just bought?
Yes, or a bunch of agencies and people.
But knowing what I, we're gonna presume a little bit on here, but knowing this, is that on his past deals that he had on other properties, there's always been conditions before the final thing. That's why he pays for the surveyor to come out, he's paying for all that to see what he can do before he finalizes on the land. So if he finds that he can't do anything, nothing might ever happen. Not saying that that's gonna happen, but...
Correct.
That's something you know.
And, and the other... See, is there anything we can possibly do besides, uh, like I, I elaborate everyone's mailbox, just because I was just a little emotional about it. And besides just hitting powerbomb, going out and giving this man a million dollars and say stop, you know, don't ruin the rest of my life on this road, what, what else can we do? I understand he's very powerful, he has a lot of money, but I have a lot invested in this place, too.
Yeah, he is also, um, has worked with the conservation commission in the past when, when, so if, if there's a, a major subdivision that goes in, the planning board, um, asks for those applicants to come before the conservation commission. And we have worked with Joe a number of times in looking at what different proposals were for subdivisions and suggested, um, eliminating a lot or two because of encroachment on water, the shape of the lot, um, what wildlife might be there. Um, and one, one, he also put in a very special, um, culvert, a very, very advanced, high-end culvert to allow for amphibians to cross underneath the road. So he, he will work with conservation and trying to make that as, as environmental as possible, um, without necessarily, you know...
Just a ring?
Yep.
Sorry, that's how I feel, I don't wanna see the road paved, I don't want to see more traffic. Right now, we have people that ride horses, that walk dogs, that bicycle in from all other type towns and from Massachusetts just to ride their bikes on this road. What's gonna happen to that once we have just another Little McMansion like all the rest of them? It's just gonna be an uproot Nottingham, I don't want that to happen, personally, I don't, it'd be sad.
Yep.
With you.
And that's, and that's why having a good conservation fund is important.
Very important, very important, but thank you for listening and, uh, we will be watching, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, probably just a cleaning effort because they haven't gone to that, uh...
Was it Oak Ridge or Maple Ridge?
Uh, Maple.
One up off of Mitchell. Is that the one, did he do that one, too?
Mitchell?
I thought that was, uh, oral language.
Okay, folks. So the board has no further public agenda items, we will now be going into non-public. Hey, folks? Hi. We're, uh, we're gonna be going into non-public now, we need folks to clear the room, please. Hi.
Guys, uh, excuse us, we need you guys to leave, we're going into a non-public session. So if you don't mind, keep the conversation outside, it's beautiful out, nice hallway. Thank you, guys, have a good evening tonight.
Thank you.